Services. I have also written and oversaw grants and managed many employees in multiple locations. I am a city commissioner now and former mayor of Leavenworth. I am a member of the Board of the Kansas City Area Transit Authority. Again, I have extensive administrative personnel management and organizational skills as well as community development and economic development experience. I am a planner, I'm an organizer, I'm a consensus builder, and I'm concerned about the future of all Leavenworth County citizens. It's not just us against them, it's been that way in the past, us against them, the county against the cities or whoever. It's time for consensus building among our cities and counties. I've seen many dysfunctional actions in the county which has caused us delays in our road construction, lawsuits with the county breaking contracts, and the mess regarding the Tyson Plan. I feel that the county commission has not been working well with these cities in the county. Things need to change. We need a plan and we need to be unified going forward. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks Brandon, thanks for the Chamber for organizing this. My first experience with politics was when I was about 10 years old, my dad was on the school board and he was trying to get the new high school built out in Easton and a lot of people sent their kids to high school out there so they wanted to pay higher taxes and send their kids to private school too. So, I remember people calling the house and yelling at dad on the phone and he put a big billboard up there by Barter House and somebody kept tearing it down. We'd go up and fix it and they'd tear it down and then we'd go back and fix it. One night he came home with a battery powered electric fence starter. So, we go up and we're straining his fence around the billboard after we fixed it and went back into Barter House and we wait. And about the time it sounded it then, truck pulls up with the lights off and my dad rolls over the window again. And I've never heard my dad laugh so hard in my life when the guy hit that electric fence and started screaming. My dad's laughing and the guy runs back to his truck and he takes a brick and throws it, bounces across our hood and he fills out and we fill out and we are in high speed pursuit. And I'm 10 years old, I'm freaking out and dad for about 10 seconds realizes this is not a good idea with his 10 year old son in the truck. So, he's headed back to the house and I'm freaking out going, wow, that must pay you a lot of money to be on the school board. But all this. And he said, they don't pay you anything to be on the school board. And I said, you do all this for nothing? And he said, it's not for nothing, he said, big long speech I don't worry with, but the words that he said stuck with me is when he said, only you know if you have the knowledge and experience to help your community. Nobody else knows that but you. And if you know that you do and you don't do anything with it, then what kind of person are you? And I feel like that's the catalyst that's got me standing here before you tonight. After going to school for business administration, planning, and cartography, I went to work for Leavenworth County and after 32 years at the county, I'm running for county commissioner because I realized I've got the knowledge and experience to serve you much better as county commissioner than just as the GIs department head. I've got a deep sense of service for people in this county from working at the courthouse for so many years and because District 1 is in my county's home for seven generations. I believe the past commissioners could have done some things better and a lot of times it's not their fault, it's because they're unfamiliar with the procedures at the county and how the county machine works. So, the problem is when that happens though, it costs you money. So, we need more diplomacy and communication at the county and less arbitration and litigation. We've got a couple of examples, if I had more time I could give you, but we had a building on Broadway we sold on 10 acres for $100,000. That was a bad deal to be one of. Then on top of that, we needed a place for a council agent to go a year later, so we rented that building back that we owned for $60,000 a year. So, to date, we paid almost $800,000 down rent on a building that we used to own. So, these are the things that I'd like to get fixed. In closing, I look forward to answering your questions this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I'm a new car owner. I moved here from Seattle and spent three years living on a farm that we purchased out in the county and then moved into the city of Leavenworth in the home that we built on Maple Avenue. So, I've been here in Leavenworth now for eight years. We also had about 80 acres of land out in the county that we purchased 20 or 30 years ago that my husband needs to get his feet on his own land and his hands on his own soil, so we've had that and have enjoyed doing that and still appreciate both of those places. I'm going to tell you what I say on my card that I leave at the door because this is what I'm out there telling people that aren't really on behavior. When I see a mess, I feel compelled to dig in and clean it up. It is just the way I am. If you've ever invited me to your home or if I've been in a church potluck, the minute I've been eating, I'm gathering up plates and clearing them out. Something needs to be done, I'm going to do it. And when I've been reading the newspaper and hear what the Leavenworth County Commission has been doing, I see a lot of mess, a lot of wasted money and a lack of transparency and accountability. I went to the county commission meeting a couple of weeks ago, the current lawsuit between them and the city of Leavenworth is at 1.4 million on the county's side. They just hired their fifth attorney. This is not the first lawsuit, there's at least one other still acting and there have been a couple of others that have gotten resolved. And from my point of view, I live in the city of Leavenworth and the county of Leavenworth, I'm going to lose no matter how the lawsuit comes out because it's my tax money on both sides of the bill. I think it is because of lack of communication, lack of transparency, sometimes impulsive decision making that some of the problems have begun, but we need to do better. I have skills, I have a lot of rational decision making to turn it around and make sure our county commission provides government that works for all of us. I have been a social worker in healthcare, mental health, and bioethics for my life. I have good listening and communication skills, know how to do conflict resolution, and a lot of experiences on communities and on teams. I grew up in a home in Russell County. My father was a county commissioner and my mother was the county superintendent of schools, so I had a lifelong understanding of county government. I am very involved in my community here. I have a solid commitment to transparency, accountability, and fiscal responsibility. We will not have inconsistency and crazy contracts. I'm honest and straightforward. My real skills are a no nonsense inclination for legality, problem solving, pragmatism, and collaboration. I think all of those things are things we need in the county. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. The Chamber and I appreciate all of you for being here.
Hi, thanks for being here and thank you Brandon and the Chamber of Commerce for organizing this forum this evening. When I crossed the Centennial Bridge back in 1974 headed to Fort Leavenworth, I never imagined that I would be standing here right now asking you to elect me onto the Board of County Commissioners. Actually, I never knew at that point in time in my life where I was going to live from one year to the next. But fortunately, after I graduated from high school and a year later, I married an individual who was a fourth generation resident of Leavenworth, Kansas. And I've now been married to my husband Steve for 41 years. We have two great children and four amazing grandchildren. I graduated from Leavenworth High School in 1976 and from the University of St. Mary in 1987. So, I've got a little bit of history here in Leavenworth. I wasn't born here, but I'm beginning to think I belong here. I've spent the past 30 years of my life working for human service organizations in Leavenworth County. Those included as vocational director of Riverside Resources, as the executive director of United Way of Leavenworth County, and then at the Guidance Center as the Prevention and Education Services Director, as the Program Manager for UCFR Social Programs, as the Community Relations Director, and as a grant writer. I've served on local and state advisory boards over the past years and on the Board of Directors of several nonprofit organizations. I've developed and approved budgets. I'm well versed in both understanding and using financial statements to make decisions. I've written policies and procedures and have participated in the development of multiple strategic plans. I've also successfully written, managed, and evaluated multiple grant applications and project proposals. As Leavenworth continues to age and grow, it's going to be up to the county commission in cooperation with our cities and townships and other people that are actively engaged in the process to ensure that there's sufficient planning and that there's sufficient revenue to operate. Roads and buildings need to be maintained, infrastructure needs to be improved and extended countywide to keep up with the current demands and in anticipation for our future growth. That's not an easy task. You know what, what I wanted to say is I strongly believe that Leavenworth County is far more than our infrastructure and our businesses. It is filled with human beings whose day-to-day needs are sometimes lost in the shuffle. Failure to focus efficient attention to the resources on public health and welfare of our county has resulted in the decline of the overall health and well-being of many in our county. Health outcomes including mental health, physical health, substance abuse, addiction, suicide rates, child welfare, and crime indicators are far from where they should be.
Did someone grab something to line up my hat?
No, I didn't. Did I?
There's one little piece of paper on this who has my key to how I'm going to ask you questions. Look at that.
Yeah, I was going to ask.
Sneaky cars took all my paper away.
I'm sneaky too.
I work for the Chamber of Commerce, I don't have any answers, I can have questions. Okay. Thank you all very much for your opening statements. We will now switch to two minutes for the answers to questions. And I do have a key in order to ask you the questions and you will be able to answer just from your seats. I would like to start first with the prepared questions and the first question is, the first answer will come from Mr. Culbertson. The question is, what is the most important issue facing Leavenworth County today? Two minutes, sir.
I think the most important thing is often overlooked, probably the things that pay the roads or address the crime problem, but really what that all stems from is that our county is 40 percent tax exempt. County's worth about $8 billion, $3.5 billion of that is on Fort Leavenworth, they don't pay any taxes. So, we're a population of 88,000 people that's operating on a budget that's only 60 percent of the money that we need to operate our infrastructure and our services. So, I think if you look at the real problem, the best things are addressed. To increase our commercial tax base so that we're not putting the box to the can on the backs of residents with property and sales tax is the biggest problem. I think we need a full-time grant writer that has billions of dollars available, but it's just for asking that we're not getting into professional grant writing paper for themselves in no time at all. And we also need to explore opportunities for income for commercial in Commerce Department for State Kansas. That freaks me out.
Okay. I have to run a tight ship, I have to run a tight ship this time. All right, the question now turns over to Ms. Johnson. Most important issue facing Leavenworth County?
Well, I think the biggest issue facing us right now is that we are missing a lot of opportunities because of our lack of coordination and collaboration. I listened to a report by Mark recently, the Mid-America Regional Council in Kansas City that would like to invest, I think, more in Leavenworth County, but they say it's, we are having a hard time getting the cities and the counties to come together and present us with a unified proposal. We're missing opportunities for growth, we're missing opportunities to improve the quality of life for all of the residents that live here. There are a lot of people who've chosen to retire here or chosen to raise their children here and they do that looking for certain quality of life indicators, but the things that pay for those are commercial development. The things that provide the tax base that gives us an opportunity to fund those things is the commercial development. And so, you need to have a balance between the two and we have to keep both of those in place. I also think we've missed opportunities to really listen to each other and to learn from each other and to benefit from a wide diversity of points of view. I sometimes think the county commission has talked to each other but haven't heard a whole lot from the whole community and that they've missed a lot of opportunities by not doing that.
Thank you. Ms. Cox, what's the most important issue facing Leavenworth County?
Okay, let me preface by saying that I realize that the county commission is, you know, they can't possibly pay for or deal with every issue that faces the community. I mean, because of what Jeff was saying, you know, we have limited resources to do that. But that being said, as I said earlier, the health outcomes of Leavenworth County are so far from where they should be, the indicators in the county that's driving. And so, that's something that should alarm all of us. We should all be thinking about that. We have one of the highest suicide rates in the state and our state suicide rate as a whole are above the national level. So, that's a crisis that is happening here in our county and it's being ignored. Our crime rate is increasing as Jeff kind of alluded to a few minutes ago and that is another thing that's being ignored. Is the county commissioner somebody that can fix that? No, they're not, but they are in a position to educate the communities so that people are aware. They are in a position of looking into other resources, of identifying opportunities to find ways and bringing people together to look at creative ways of dealing with the situation that we're dealing with.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, I think what is the most important facing issue facing our county is the management and administration of our tax dollars. I mean, we're paying money into Leavenworth County, it's being spent on lawyers right now. I think, I don't believe as a county commissioner that I should be micromanaging departments. I think that each department has elected, well, certain departments have elected officials that they are taking care of their departments. It's up to me to make sure that the money is spent properly in the county. We need adequate funding for our roads, for our fire districts, for our sheriff's office for safety. I just, from what I hear when I'm going door to door, the township's getting what they need to make our lives easier and safer. I don't know that, but that's what I'm hearing. We need to preserve and protect our rural way of life in our county. And I hate to lose certain ag businesses in our county like Ernst &amp; Derry and some of the smaller businesses. We have a lot of small family businesses throughout the county and I've always worked to support those businesses and entrepreneurs. I want to encourage more entrepreneurship in our county, so that is my action.
Thank you. The next question, I'd like to kind of follow up on something a couple of you mentioned and this is almost a shameless point both for the Chamber and for Leavenworth County Development Corporation. Leavenworth County is a member of the Leavenworth Heights and Area Chamber of Commerce. As such, how would you work with that in line with the Chamber and partner organizations like Leavenworth County Development Corporation or Leavenworth Main Street or even on a larger scale from the Kansas City area? We talked about Mark briefly, briefly for example. How would you work with those organizations like the Chamber or LCDC in general and to what sorts of economic development goals? So, I'm going to start with Ms. Johnson.
Well, I would continue my involvement that I've already established with the Chamber on the Government Affairs Committee and on the MAC which looks at ways to improve collaboration with the military community as well as with the city. I would also encourage, and especially if we move to five commissioners, I think that gives us more opportunities to be liaisons, to make sure that there are many community groups like the Chamber, like the Main Street, like the city councils that we can be in communication with, that we can get information from, so that we can build intentionally better relationships with a number of different groups. That doesn't just benefit the county commission although it does benefit us because we get to hear about a lot of points of view and often the fourth or fifth point of view you hear is the one that you go, oh, I had never thought of that. You know, that might be a way to solve this problem. That's how you come up with good problem solving. So, I think it needs to be intentional that we do outreach with other groups and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Cox?
I think that it's the role of the county commission to be actively involved in all of the organizations that Brandon and Linda mentioned and make themselves available to attend those, but not try to take over, control them because there needs to be cooperation and collaboration. You know, not saying we are the county and then you, you know, adhere to what we're saying rather than working in cooperation. So, yes, we need to make sure that we're involved in those different organizations, but only to the extent necessary and when wanted, because sometimes, you know, your input isn't wanted, and when needed. And when that happens, we need to make sure that we're available or have somebody on the council, on the commission available to participate and there should be active participation, not just passive.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Bowden?
Yes, I am, I've been a member of Main Street, I actually was a manager of Main Street at one time and I sit on LCDC meetings, every meeting that I can and Court Authority. We work, we work hard hand in hand together to get our business parks going in Tonganoxie and in Leavenworth to try to get quality companies in here that have, that produce employees with good salaries that will improve our community and throughout the county. So, I feel like I have a good relationship with them. I'm working closely with Mid-America Regional Council right now and to try to get a transportation plan here in Leavenworth County. So, I think that we all need to work together and we all need to have a vision for Leavenworth County and we need to have input from all of our cities and entities in Leavenworth County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Culbertson?
I think a lot of effort needs to be put into enhancing our LCDC. I want to promote our county to the east coast and the west coast where the taxes are a lot higher. Our house here, it's worth $130,000, it'll cost you $700,000 on the east coast and the west coast. So, we should be very competitive bringing businesses to the Midwest just simply on a tax basis. There's a lot of weight to grant writer, I think, working with the Leavenworth Main Street on some potential projects. We've got a lot to offer, we just need to get it out to the right people, make them understand, you know, it's a lot of beneficial for them to operate in the Midwest for tax purposes. We can offer IRBs, tax incentives. LCDC's doing a good job, but they need a lot more reinforcement.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to go ahead and piggyback on something that several of you have already commented on and that is transportation. KC, ATA, and Mark have advocated for a county-wide approach. What, with that in mind, county-wide approach to, I'm sorry, public transportation, with that in mind, what role do you think the county should play? I.e., would you support helping to implement transportation plans that have been recently presented to the county? And we're going to start with Ms. Cox.
Oh, that's a good question. I think that, yes, transportation is and has been an issue in Leavenworth County, public transportation, I'll put it that way, for a long time. However, there have been efforts in the past to bring private organizations to the community to help with the transportation issue. There was a bus that ran through Leavenworth with scheduled appointments for people to be able to have access to, it wasn't utilized and so they left. And so, I think that a lot of planning and thought needs to go into this as we look at how do we expand. I was looking over and the people that have been involved in the planning to date and Nancy alluded to that, we need to make sure that we involve Baser and Linwood and Tonganoxie and all of the other, and Easton and all the other smaller pockets in our county, not just focusing on the city of Leavenworth because really the greatest need experienced is in the city of Leavenworth, yet we also have a large part of our population that's aging that is throughout the county of Leavenworth. I think about 11.7 percent of the population of Leavenworth County are members of the aging population and they live dispersed throughout the county, not just focused only in the city of Leavenworth. So, there needs to be a lot more planning as to what type and make the decisions about that, but yes, absolutely, the county should help and be in a leadership role or at the table at all times in that process.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Bowden?
Well, transportation has always been my biggest project for Leavenworth. I started in this Leavenworth County. I worked, like I said, for Prestige Home Care and I do see the need out of the county. It's, especially for the elderly and the firm, it's very difficult for them to get transportation to and from, their doctors to and from, anywhere really. When I was a kid, we had buses everywhere. I even rode a city bus to school and we had trains and we had all kinds of things. Now, one of our biggest obstacles obviously is the funding, but I've worked with the Kansas City Area Transit Authority to set up a plan for Leavenworth County. The county commissioners were not interested in it yet, but hopefully they will be in the future. And there are a lot of funding opportunities. For example, in Kansas City, there is a veteran program where veterans ride free, veterans, you know, Veterans Administration pays for them to ride the buses, so that helps fund the buses. In Kansas, KDOT share would be 80 percent and the local share would be 20 percent for a vehicle purchase matching program, which is really good help. I think there's ways that we could do it, but we have to all work together. It has to be all the cities in the county and it has to be the rural areas as well. So, I might not finish with that. I do have a transportation plan with me and you can look at it online about the funding sources and about that. There are opportunities, we have businesses that want to try to get people to and from work that are not able to. So, there's a lot of opportunity here and I am a big proponent of transportation in Leavenworth County.
Thank you very much. Mr. Culbertson?
I think the transportation issue needs a lot of, it's not really a county issue at this point. It's transportation, public transportation only that is for congested areas. The county's 33,000 parcels, 8,000 of those are agricultural, average agricultural parcel is 20 acres. Your houses are 20 acres apart. A bus system or a light rail for the county doesn't make a lot of sense right now. But I understand how the market system works, you know, that you get big points for working on transportation projects, so I know the county wants to get on board with that and get that money. Sometimes though, you can't afford to take the money. That might not sound like it makes sense, but that's kind of how this works right now. I think it's a good project we're looking to for down the road right now. This is a city project, that's where the congested population is. I think Nancy's done a lot of good work for getting the city of Leavenworth hooked up with the public transportation. Baser area is probably maybe a good place to start since it's extended to Legends, just to get her foot in the door, to earmark some home floors. So, I think it's a good idea, but I think there's a lot more homework to be given to and it's not something we need to focus on right now.
Thank you very much. Ms. Johnson?
Well, I'm sitting here thinking, we need an entrepreneur to start an Uber program here in Leavenworth County. Actually, I do, I've been going around and talking to different groups about some of the needs and one of the things I have heard from employers is that they need access to more workers, high school employee, you know, high school graduates that can come out here and work from maybe Windide County, even perhaps from Kansas City, Missouri, if they could get themselves into say West Bottoms or over to the Legends and so we wouldn't have to drive all over Kansas City, Missouri, but could pick up people. And I think having some circuits of bus routes within the county sounds like a very good plan. I do suspect that it's a bit ambitious to try to meet all the needs of all the people all the time. And if I'm elected as county commissioner, I know I will not do that and I know that I will make some of you unhappy about things that you come and talk to me about, but I think it is our job to try to balance what is in the best interest of most of the people, what is in the best interest of our current funding availability, how do we maximize that? How do we better utilize? I happen to think, again, back to the notion of collaboration, that if cities and the county will work together, we're going to maximize our ability to meet the needs of all of us.
Thank you. One of the things that have been mentioned so far has been revenue and new sources of revenue. And one of the questions we had submitted is along those lines and that is, if new sources, new resources were available, what one area of county services would you feel needs additional resources if you had to pick one?
I knew you were going to do that. I didn't get this question. I didn't get this question ahead of time. Oh, there's, there's so many things. Well, I think, one of the things that I think is very important, um, right now, when you go down, um, 70, 7th Highway, there are 13 stoplights between here and the Legends. And as we've been recruiting businesses, like Jeff talked about recruiting businesses, one of the issues that we've had with recruiting businesses is, is going through those stoplights to get between here and somewhere else. And, um, so, um, I would like to see if we had the money, and if we could get the money, a capital plan to, um, to, to do limited access on 7th Highway, so that it would be a straight shot, and we wouldn't have to stop at every stoplight, because, um, this is really affecting us in regard to our business recruitment.
Thank you. Mr. Colbertson.
This is the easiest question, because really all I'm doing is reiterating what I hear, I'm probably not gonna endorse the talking to people. Pay road is number one. Reduce the crime rate is always number two. So, we need to, uh, help facilitate our police enforcement, our sheriff's department to help with that. School security is always top of the list, you know, with the active shooter being on these days, people are worried about their kids, that should be number one, I think, with pay road, but it's at least in the top three. The human society needs to get off the ground. They're already actually working on society, but they're just not getting funded, so that would be a great resource to fund, and we found some, some funds somewhere. The Alliance Against Family Violence needs to get back running, that was closed recently. Uh, the Drive Passports for the city line was closed recently. I think they finally started it up again, but that would be another great source of funding. And what I hear all the time from emergency responders is, we could reduce, uh, response times by simply providing address signs to everybody's driveway. There's actually more desire in our books for everybody to have their address again to the driveway.
Amen.
I just did a survey, 70% of the drivers out there do not have an address. So, for emergency responders to find your address, 3 o'clock in the morning, if your house is on fire, that's easy, but 3 o'clock in the morning, you find one, a driveway with no address, and the next three drivers next to you don't have any address either, so they can't find one, they're cut down, so, those are the top.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Ms. Johnson.
Well, with my background in healthcare and mental health, I don't know whether you're aware of it, some of the funding to the Guidance Center and some of the funding to the Health Department comes from the county, and I think both of those are areas that have had cuts and that meet a lot of needs of a lot of different people. Um, I just sat in last night on the Board of Education talking so much about the importance of early learning, early education, really making sure that children get a good start even before they get to school. I think as a county, we should be supportive of the schools' effort now to start with a pre-K program and other things to make sure our children have a chance to at least have a healthy and safe environment to live in. Uh, as you all do know, the, the Sheriff's Department is also under the jurisdiction, in terms of its budget at least, of the county, and, uh, they have our, you know, Vicki pointed out, we have a high suicide rate, we also have a high child abuse rate, we have a lot of people on drugs, uh, we need treatment for that. I think those are the places that, out of my very own personal experience, I would begin. I also wanna say, though, that I'm a good learner, and I'm a good listener, and as I start in this position, I would be learning what are the things that we really need to do. It would just be my opinion, it would be, what I hear is the consensus from the people that we're talking to, the individuals and the groups in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Cause.
I think that I kinda made pretty clear, I really think that if, if I've had this windfall on the county commission and could spend it any way I wanted, we need, we need to shore up our community mental health, and that is because it impacts and affects so many different things in our county. It affects individuals that, um, are addicted to drugs, it affects people who have anger control issues and, and, uh, harm their children or their spouses. It also affects, um, young people and old people and middle-aged people who are struggling with depression, who make the decision to end their lives, and that is something that is not, it's something that just pulls at my heartstrings every time I hear again that another person has died, and we just lost another member of our community last week to suicide. It's happening all too often, and so we absolutely, if I had my dream, it would be to infuse as much money as we could into mental health and suicide prevention, because it, it saves money down the road for crime, it saves money down the road for incarceration, it saves money in the future for all of the things that we're spending money from reacting rather than being proactive. So, I wanna see us become a more proactive county.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, we gotta switch tracks just a little bit here, and I'm gonna ask a question that probably was the most frequently submitted, and I know it's on everyone's minds, and this will be, I'm gonna go ahead and make this the last prepared, uh, submitted question, so that we can go ahead and turn over the floor here in a few minutes, and that is, uh, if elected, what is the first thing you'll try to do, or, or what would you work to do to restore respect to the reputation of the county commission, and by extension, the county as a whole? And we're gonna go ahead and start with Mr. Colbertson.
Uh, actually, I'm gonna look at this. Stay out the front page with the negative. It's okay to be on the front page, but it's just not for negative things. Um, I think it's gonna take care of itself, the problem, the issues that you're talking about, the, the change at the guard, I mean, the four of us already get along really well, I've worked with Doug Smith 30 years, we get along really well. I think the problem's pretty much gonna take care of itself, and I think it's important to do that, because all the things we were talking about, bringing businesses down, one of the things they do is they do their homework. They're gonna look at the local paper, and they're gonna see, and if they don't want a business to come down, look what they did to Tyson, or look what their county commissioner is doing with these lawsuits. So, they check that stuff out, so that's very important to get that taken care of, and I think it's a simple thing, because I think a simple change in the guard is gonna take care of that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Well, I've said it before, but it's still where I would begin. I would begin by building communication and collaboration with other governing bodies, with the state, with MARK, with the city governments, with all kinds of local commissions. Uh, communicating and listening, I think, are going to give us what we need to know in order to be a more effective and a more respected, uh, decision-making body. I also think, in addition to electing me, of course, that the give me five resolution will help, because I think, uh, requiring a minimum of three people to be, uh, decision-makings is gonna enhance communication. The three of them are gonna have to come up with some agreement to be a majority to make a decision. It'll slow the process down a little bit, it will require more communication within the Board of County Commissioners as well as within the community, and I think that will also help to improve the process.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. Ms. Cause.
Yeah, I, I, I really think it's important for the county commission to maintain the respect and the trust of the people that have elected them. I mean, that, that should be at the top of our list, and so, as a county commissioner, I most certainly would never do anything to embarrass you, because, you know, I, I am your representative, and I represent you in the community, and I represent you out in the, in the world of social media or all of those things, so it's, it's really important. I also think it's important that we maintain and respect the people who come before the commission, and the people who work for the county, and treat them with respect at all times, and earn that respect back, and we can only do that by setting an example while we're there, and I honestly think that, that kind of like, uh, Jeff mentioned, is that there, I don't believe, sitting up here, there's a single person who would embarrass you as a county commissioner, but I will guarantee you, I would not.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Bowden.
Yes, I think that, uh, what they've said is very true, and I think the respect is the biggest thing. Um, I mean, I quit going to the commission meetings, I watch them on television, because I got tired of getting chewed out for everything that the city of Leavenworth does wrong by a county commissioner. In a commission meeting, it is so unprofessional and, um, ugly. It's just ugly, it just is. Um, what I would do first is to, um, get, gather together people throughout the county, um, first talking with the cities, and then, and then, um, just getting together community groups, and work on a long-range plan for our county. Where do we want our county to be 20 years, 10 years from now? Do, do we wanna be, um, what kind of businesses do we wanna recruit? And we need to have a plan in order to know what businesses we wanna recruit, so that we don't get something that the people don't want, like a Tyson. We wanna get the businesses that will, will make our future better, and so that would be the first thing I would do, is just, and I've done a lot of this before with long-range planning, I would help implement a long-range plan and visioning with our citizens' input.
Thank you very much. Are you okay on time, or do you need to wait? Okay, wanted to be sure. We'll go ahead and open the floor up to questions from the attendees. If you would like to use this microphone in the center aisle, you can. Chuck has assured me he will have that on and ready for you to use. Uh, if you wish to ask questions from your seats, you're welcome to do so. I, for one, could never be accused of being quiet, so, uh, if you aren't either, more power to you. Questions from the crowd? Sir?
Yeah, very much. Uh, and this is in regarding specifically what you just said, Nancy, that I have promoted and told people lots of times over the last few years, that the county needs a master plan, that's kind of along the line of what you're saying, and all I ever hear is, well, we've got a road plan, and I keep saying there's more to it than roads, and it needs to be brought in, it needs to be planned out, it needs to be looked to the future, and I, for one, would like to see something like that, and I want to know, are all of y'all willing to make that happen because we need it?
Okay, so, would you, I imagine you're looking to expand, you don't want to say yes to no, right?
It could be a yes or no.
It could be a yes or no, all right. Well, then, let's just go down.
My answer would be yes, I agree with you. If you don't know where you're going, you don't know how to get there, you don't know where to begin, and we need to have a plan, not just for roads, but for development, for quality of life, for parks and trails. I mean, there, you know, we need to integrate all of the kind of aspects of things that we think are important, and, uh, we absolutely should have a plan.
Ms. Cause.
A resounding yes, and I mentioned when I was, sorry, I was trying to talk too long, that, um, that I have experience in developing strategic plans and implementing those plans, so I, I really do understand how important it is to set goals, to look at your vision, and to look to the future, five years down the road, three years down the road, five, 10, where do we wanna be, where do we see ourselves? So, absolutely, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and, and I can be corrected in a few minutes, that the, the county is actually working right now on a strategic plan.
Ms. Bowden.
I already said how I feel about it, we need to have a strategic plan.
All right. Mr. Colbertson.
Yeah, actually, we have a strategic plan, but we've got a year plan right now that's created in 2005. It was created by Ossernare, a company that has no clue anything about Leavenworth County. Um, I provided most information there, I mean, uh, so actually, it's not even outdated yet, but nothing in that plan is going to peruse, because it was created on people that don't know anything about the county. They have armed trails, they're gonna buy all the strange and creepy bottles, you're not gonna buy the best armed ground in Leavenworth County. So, nothing in this plan that has come to peruse, so we need a plan to act like, as I'm saying, Commissioner Smith has been starting five year plan, uh, things are good beginning, um, and it needs to be created by people who are familiar with their county and know what's going on. Farming it out to some company like Ossernare is a bad idea.
Sure. Right on.
Maybe if I got her.
Sure, sure. All right. Other questions? Bob? I mean, sh- Mr. Ullman. I'm a county.
Take, let's start with two assumptions, assume you are elected, and then assume that the, give me five passes. How do you see the salaries for the commissioners? How would you vote towards salaries for the commissioners if we expand to five?
All right, I'll go ahead and go back to an order here. Um, we're gonna start with Ms. Cause.
Okay, um, you know, that's a really difficult question for me to answer, because as I've talked to people, I've, I've heard and listened to so many different, um, sides of how they think that should be handled, so the first thing I have to say is I've never been a county commissioner, so I actually have no idea how much of a time commitment it is. If it is a full-time job, and it is a 40-hour or more a week job, then the county commission should be compensated in, in that manner. If it is a part-time job, even if it's for five, then it should be compensated based on part, part-time, um, employment. I know that the city commissions pay themselves less, and that's, that's neither here nor there. To me, what needs to happen is that, that we need to get in there, and I, if I'm elected, I want to see for myself, how much time does this take? I mean, to efficiently figure out how much time, and then what is my time worth, and what do the voters believe that our time is worth if we are qualified and doing a good job in representing you, and not being entering, you know, being put into lawsuits and all of those different things, that, actually, how much time does it take? Take the time to study it before we make a decision that changes the whole way things have ever been done in the past, and let's look at it before we change anything that would affect future commissioners and, um, other individuals who might wanna attempt to be a commissioner, especially young people.
Thank you. Ms. Bowden.
Well, we have a county administrator who makes more than our city manager, but he has less duties, um, I mean, he makes over 120,000 a year. Um, our city commissioners do make less, um, I cannot believe that the county commission could be a full-time job, especially if you get five commissioners in there, and I would vote to cut the salaries to what we have currently and what's, what's coming throughout the state. Right now, we're one of the highest salaries in the state, that's what I would do.
Okay. Mr. Colbertson.
I would say, simply, the short answer is if it's a part-time job, then it should pay part-time, but being in town for 30 years and personally getting to know the last 22 commissioners, I don't think any homework was done in asking the past commissioners, is it full-time job? Uh, a lot of people are comparing city commission jobs to the county commission jobs. I've got a whole list of things that county commissioners do, that city commissioners don't. I've done homework with some of the city commissioners, they spend about eight hours a week doing the city commission work.
That is not true.
I'm, I'm saying to several commissioners that I've talked to, so, if it's a part-time job, then it should pay part-time, but I think that was an afterthought that the give-me-five people came up with, one of the biggest blowback to get was, well, it's gonna cost us more money, so we don't wanna get five commissioners, so I said, well, what if it didn't cost us more money? So, I think by the time you figure if it's actually a full-time job, if it's not, you're gonna put more work on the county administrator, he's gonna ask for an assistant administrator, then they're gonna ask for a finance director, then they're gonna need another secretary, so no matter how you slice it, growing, going, it costs more money.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Johnson.
Well, I would be, um, and have told people as I go around knocking on doors, that I think we should leave this total package of salary no more than it has been for the three for at least one year, to give us a transition time, which means that I'm saying I would be willing to accept three fifths of what is currently being paid until we evaluate, how, how do the five work, uh, how much time and energy is it gonna take from each of us? The budgets have already been written, it would not require any emergency budgeting. I don't know whether you all know, but the county commission sets its own salary in January. Well, in January, there would only be three of us, even if, give me five passes, because it will take a special election that probably won't happen until February or March to elect the other two commissioners. So, there will be three of us in January that make this decision, and my, my inclination is to leave it exactly like it is, if the give-me-five passes divided up five ways instead of three, until we have a year to evaluate and determine what is really involved.
Thank you. Other questions from the crowd? Ma'am?
Hi, name's Ashley Lucky. Uh, so I have a background in economic development, and when I moved here, that was when Tyson and Tonga Noxie were going down. So, uh, so it would definitely be my interest. So, my question is, if something like that were to arise in your district while you're in this office, what would you do to kind of, for that?
And before, before we get to the answers, all right, ma'am? Okay. Just wanted to be sure. So, we're gonna go ahead, we have to meet Ms. Bowden first. So we're going to go ahead and we have to meet Ms. Bowden first.
Okay, so what you're basically saying is if, what happened again?
If a similar situation were to arise, so if a lawyer were to come in and say, hey, we're relocating here in your district, but your attorney was not for it. And it seems like there was a lot of.
I think it's important to get the community input ahead of time. That's what I would do.
Mr. Culberson.
There's a lot to that question. The Tyson plan was going to be put in with no building permit. The state was shoving the Tyson plan down the road. So when you ask, you know, what would we do locally, sometimes there's not an option. Another problem I have with the Tyson deal was, there wasn't very much homework done. I personally voted a couple of cities that the last Tyson plans went into. I talked to the sheriff, he said he'd never investigated rates of murders before Tyson came to town. They said they were going to hire 2,500 local people, they didn't hire any local people hardly. The schools, I talked to superintendents, the schools were inundated because the families came with the Tyson employees. The schools couldn't handle the influx of population then, put students in mobile homes, and Tyson didn't help pay for that stuff. Tyson is so rich that they just pay their fines for violating EPA rules. They don't follow the rules, they just pay the fines. So there wasn't much homework done into a company like that. If a company, when you say like that, if they're like Tyson, I would do a lot of homework before I let a company like that run.
Ms. Johnson.
Well, I've talked also to a number of people, and I've been told that when a big industry is making that kind of decision about where to locate a huge plant, and where to put it, that they start with state officials, and they start with the top of the realm, and do move down. And that they don't want it to be a very public thing. They are competitors, they want to leave it quiet until it's a done deal, and they can announce, da-da, Tyson is moving to Tonganoxi. With that being said, I do think that the local community needed to have a whole lot more heads-up information from the state and from Tyson about some of the issues that they knew were going to be, you know, the questions that were going to come up. They needed to have FAQ, the frequently asked question sheets, that they could immediately educate the community. They may not have a lot of upfront time, but they could say, we're going to take two or three decisions, weeks, to really work this through in the community and see where we are. I wanted to say one other thing in your comment. Even though I will be elected from a district, and whether it's three or whether it's five, we will be elected by districts, I don't assume I only represent my district. I will listen to the people in my district, but I assume that the decisions I make will be made for the county as a whole. And in some extent, they'll be made for the county as part of the region, and they'll be made for the county as part of the state. So I think the area that I'm going to consider, what's really for the good, is going to be a little bit broader than just my immediate district.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Ms. Cause.
Well, what they said, but I would add that I would not, as a county commissioner, think that it's a good idea to unilaterally allow the county administrator to enter into an agreement of confidentiality with a business or anyone else. And I think that's part of what got us into that trouble to begin with. That I understand that they have no, you know, non-disclosure agreements and things like that, but that should have been a responsibility of every member of that county commission to, should have known exactly what they were entering into, to have a few minutes or given some time to study, and find out the things that Mr. Culberson had mentioned, so that they could make an informed decision as to whether or not they wanted to sign a contract that said that they would give the tax abatement or breaks to them and all those things. That didn't happen. And so, you know, we're the county commission, we can't advocate and push everything off and say, oh, well, that's up to the county administrator. That was, I think, where part of the mistake began, and I think that's what got the county commission into the most trouble.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks for the question.
Ready for switch over? Got ready for you right there. Thank you. Round of applause for the teenage audience. Now, it should keep time right on. She actually asked a question, I was very impressed by that. And based on the time, I'd say, to save enough time for closing statements, we have time for one, maybe two more questions from the crowd. Any takers, or must I go back to my prepared questions? I do have someone more. Anyone? Anyone have any questions they'd like to ask? Sir.
I'm Alboin, and my question concerns the three for five exchange issue. You said if it does pass, and assuming that all of you, which is not going to be possible, our county commissioners, you know where you live, I'm sure you've seen the way the lines have been drawn. Anybody going to be out of the job?
That's a good question.
Because you're a county commissioner, you're going to be in a new district.
So as I understand, right, if we have the switch over to five, and the district lines are redrawn, how is that going to affect the folks who are running? Let's go ahead and start with Mr. Culberson.
I know a little bit about it. No matter who lives where, they'll adjust the lines to keep the commissioners' position. So that won't really come to play. The issues I have with five are, I'm actually for five. Comparing us to the other six counties that are most rural than us, about half of them have three commissioners, about half of them have five commissioners. Our population, I think, merits having five commissioners, maybe it's time for that. But a couple of things that don't really understand is, what started out saying it's for better representation in the south end of the camp. I talked to the Glenwood Council last week, they didn't even know about this, give me five. I talked to Tonganoxi City Councilors, they know about it, but they've not been involved whatsoever. Back to dividing the map, no matter how you slice this map before the 2020 census date comes out, this is all based on 2010 data. No matter how you slice this give me five district map, you're not giving another commissioner to the south end of the camp. You're going to give another commissioner to Lansing, and you're going to give another commissioner to Leavenworth. That's where the two new commissioners are going to be. So just, how about what it is? It's five commissioners for the total population, not for better representation in the south.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Johnson.
Well, I've seen several maps, and I happen to know that Jeff and/or the county clerk who's working on, you know, she's looking at the numbers of people, drawing boundaries, she wants to keep townships and precincts intact. She will make sure that the elected people are in a district, that they'll have a position. But at least in some of the maps, we may be in a different position than the position we ran in. And that may have a new person. Jeff's right, there is more population up in this corner, but the way it is, I think there are some very important basics that are being done. One is that the region around Tonganoxi and whatever numbers it takes will have a representative if we get five. Baser will have a representative if we get five. And then there will be three up in this neck of the woods. One in mostly Lansing, one, and Leavenworth will be split between two, including some rural areas, is kind of the way it looks to me. It's not the only way it could be done, but that was the latest map that I saw. It's not going to be an easy thing, and we don't know what's going to happen in 2020. We know that Baser's going to have more people in 2020 than they had in 2010. We know that Tonganoxi has grown a little, and every place has grown a little, but the disproportionate growth has been in Baser. So one of the things she's looking at is putting fewer people in the Baser district if the give me five passes, to give them more growth room to compensate for the 2020.
Thank you, ma'am. And Ms. Cause. Yes, Ms. Cause, yes.
Well, I think Jeff answered the question about what would happen, you know, that once the, if it passes, and that's up to the voters, that the districts will be drawn then. They will also probably change to some extent, I don't know how, and after the 2020 census. I hope that by 2020, because you've elected the right people to the county commission, that the population in the south has exploded.
And in the north.
And, well, but I'm just saying, that's where we have the most potential for growth at this time. And I also, and I do hope that in the northern districts, that things explode, so that there's so many people moving to Leavenworth County, that we have the five districts with 50,000 people in each district, and everything's thriving, and we have lots of money to do everything. I'm just, I'm saying, we don't know what's going to happen in the future is my point. We started off in Leavenworth County, when we started with the county commission, first time around, there was about 27,000 people in Leavenworth County, and they represented, those three individuals represented the people of Leavenworth County. Our population probably is, well, it is nearing 80,000. So it's time for us to expand the number of people representing us. And it's also time for us to come to the point where three people aren't making the decision for the budget that is carried by Leavenworth County, that we have five people are making that decision, those decisions, so that things are more circumspect, that we also, things don't happen like we enter ourselves into lawsuits, that perhaps if there were five people looking at decisions that were being made, those decisions would not have been made. And that's why I feel we need the five commissioners. Not for, you know, more representation in the south or the north. We are Leavenworth County commissioners, and we're responsible for the entire county, each one of us. But, that being said, when there's five of us, I think there's less chance that bad decisions will be made.
Thank you. Ms. Bowden.
Well, currently, there are three commissioners, and two of us, two of our districts, we live in Leavenworth, we already live in Leavenworth, there are two districts. So there's always a possibility there could be two from Leavenworth right now. So I think you'd have more of a spread if you divide it into five. The problem I've seen with the three-member commission, and I've looked at how other commissioners do this as well with three members, is that when a person is out very sick for a long period of time, and the other two don't get along, things don't get done. And in some counties where they have three commissioners, the chairman actually gets a second vote, so the chairman actually has more power than the other two commissioners. And so, you know, I just think overall, having the five members is a lot more, would have a lot more diversity of opinion and diversity of life experience, and I just think it's a good way to go.
Thank you, ma'am. At this point, we're going to go ahead and start to wrap up. I'm going to, except for three minutes, free candidate, I'm going to go to reverse order from how we did the openings. And so the honor of the first closing, and again, you're free to use the lectern if you'd like, the honor of the first closing statement will go to Ms. Cause.
Okay, Nancy, do you want to stand or sit? Stand, okay.
Don't want to up on the table.
Okay, I'll try, well, you know, I'm like a head. I want to thank you again for coming tonight. I want, Nancy?
Already.
Time out. You know, it's my love for Leavenworth County, and the opportunities, and the needs, and the barriers, and all of those things that I've told you about tonight that led me to seek the position of responsibility and trust with you, and asking you to elect me as the county commissioner. I've learned a great deal about our county over the years. I've learned about its strengths and its weaknesses, and its opportunities, and all the things that go into the day-to-day living in Leavenworth County. And I think that I have a lot to offer and to give back based on what I've learned. Leavenworth County has the opportunity and potential to lead our region in identifying and addressing needs and becoming a model for positive growth in our cause. If there's anything that I want you to take away from this forum this evening, is that as your commissioner, I am committed to listening to and learning from all of you. Not just the people that are very vocal, all of you, you know, quietly, call me, all those things, I'm available. That's just kind of the person that I am. I'll assess all sides of every issue that comes before me on the county commission in a respectful and thoughtful manner, and draw my own conclusions based on that, which is in the best interest of the entire county as a whole. I believe that I am the person to assist with bringing about positive change and growth in Leavenworth County, and that I will bring a unique perspective to the county commission. I feel that I'm well-qualified for the office, and I'm seeking in hope that the residents of the second district, because that's who's going to be electing one of the two of us, will give me the honor and the opportunity to use the skills and perspectives and knowledge I gained over the years, specific to Leavenworth County, to serve as your county commissioner. Your vote makes a difference, and your opinion matters. I respectfully ask for your vote and look forward to serving you. Together, we can make Leavenworth County even better. Thank you.
Well, you heard the language tonight, for me and for others that I think will express what I think is important. I think planning and vision are important, and I will bring that to this endeavor if I am elected. I think communication and collaboration are important. I think listening and learning are important. I also think that being pragmatic and recognizing that there are sometimes limits to what we can do and how soon we can do it, and using some common sense about where do we begin and what can we get done, are good skills. And I have that in spades, I was born with that, so it isn't anything I've learned along the way. I too have been a manager and have written many, many strategic plans, and have read budgets, more than I've written budgets, but I do know how to read budgets and interpret and understand math. I think that sometimes being in a position like the county commission is a balancing act. You have to balance the needs of each other, your ability to communicate and get along, your ability to balance each other's priorities. And it's also a balancing act in terms of the county. We have to have development to keep the tax base high enough that our property taxes don't just go out the road. We have a big chunk of this county that isn't taxed because it's a state or a federal institution. So our homes get taxed at a pretty high level. The way to balance that out is to get some industry in here. Any industry is going to cause some problems, not as many as Tyson, that's for sure, but problems when I say some additional traffic, some additional adaptations, some additional parking places. You have to balance that. And as a commissioner, I will try to bring the balance. I will try to keep an open mind, I will listen to the experts, but I will also listen to every single person that has an opinion they would like to express about a decision we're making. And I will especially listen to my co-commissioners to try to make the very best decision that I can. I would too appreciate your vote. And I want to say, since I am the outsider, I sometimes think coming to a community gives you a new and different perspective. You learn about that community, and you do learn some things about that community that sometimes the people who've lived here for many years don't even quite realize. So it isn't always the folks that have lived here forever that have the only perspective. I think I bring a perspective of learning and interest to this as well, and I hope you'll vote for me. Thank you.
Some of the stuff I already talked about, but I already had it written, so if you're going to hear it somewhere, but again. From my experience, working for the county for the last 30 years, I already know where the problems are, and I already know how to fix them. The boilerplate state we hear from a lot of candidates is lower taxes. But that has no merit, if you're thinking of simply cutting budgets, because that's not the way we lower taxes, because you're going to cut immediate assets like the one against family violence, which is our task force. And you can't properly deal with increasing the crime rate in our community. So increasing the tax base is the key to lower taxes. Paying more is providing needs, or we're handicapped again, like I said, because we're a community that's 40% tax exempt. So it takes creating an abstract thinking to be able to finance the county. Recognizing things commissioners do, people's needs, like people in the north end of the city want groceries, so we're back. They want something done about the anxiety firm, they want security for the school, they want great things for our kids to do. So the county can offer and send us some benefits and make a lot of this stuff happen. We need to, like Jerry started, develop a strategic plan for our, created by a local people. I've got a vision for this county, and I would like the opportunity to represent you in moving this county forward. Let me finish by saying I truly believe that holding public office is a matter of public trust. Public officials are doing a great deal of authority, over the last other constituents, and responsibility. It is the belief that integrity, is my belief that integrity and good moral character are essential to public service. It's my hope that I've earned your trust and that you will support me in this election.
Thank you.
Thank you again for having us tonight. I've been working on several projects while being in the city. One of them is to try to get a new grocery store in North Leavenworth. Unfortunately, we don't have the place where we had Country Mart or Tuck-Age. But we're still looking at other areas there. We desperately need a new grocery store in North Leavenworth. I've been working over the years on the business.
I've been working over the years on the business park at the city, I've gone to, well, I've been at the city, I've gone to Washington DC twice now. We send somebody every year and I've gotten to go twice to talk to our legislators, to advocate for prison improvements. We have a lot of prison employees here. We have a lot of prison, federal and state. And the VA expansion to try to get a new hospital, to, and for growth at Fort Leavenworth. And many issues, other issues affecting jobs throughout the county. I've also advocated for a new bridge across the Missouri River. And we have to do that by two states. We've got to work with Missouri on, and that's been a difficult, difficult task. And we, and I also have advocated at the state level for reinstatement of K-dog funds, that we're taking out mental health dollars and other initiatives that have been cut throughout our state over the last few years. Personally, I think it's important that citizens can talk to commissioners about issues that matter to you, understanding different perspectives. I have responded to each and every caller while serving as commissioner in Leavenworth. It's important to improve working relationships with and between all municipalities in our county. And if anyone has a concern or a question, I feel like they should be able to contact me directly. I have served this community for most of my life and do my homework. As your elected representative, I ask questions about things going on in the county that I don't understand. I pass institutional questions on to the appropriate individual for response. I realize that the city is not the county, but I can bring my expertise in service and management to embark on. We need to preserve and protect integrity and diversity of our farm communities and rural businesses, as well as promote prosperity and safety throughout the county. I will be a good steward for your tax dollars. Thank you again, and I would appreciate your vote.
I'd like to thank all of you for coming out tonight and remind you that we have another forum, one last forum next Tuesday in this very room at six o'clock for the Kansas State House of Representatives, Districts Forty, Forty-One, Forty-Two. And I also think it's very important that you take note of what you saw tonight. However you vote, you just have to treat each other with respect, treat the crowd and vice versa with respect. And I think, not just for their efforts and for me, you and I, that is what I think deserves a round of applause. So let's, we're not. I would also challenge you, talk to these folks. As I said earlier, I know all four of them, I know all four of them, would love to hear from you talking to them. So definitely, talk to these folks and learn more about them. That will conclude our forum for tonight. Hopefully within the next week, I will have the video of the forum up on YouTube, once I can find a twelve-year-old to help me. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, have a good night.
Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you.